Janice Savage Martin, President of the Duncanville ISD Board of Trustees, called this meeting of the Duncanville Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of Board of Trustees is present, that the meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We will now move to opening ceremonies. The invocation will be given by Janet Vera Cruz.
Good evening, everyone. If you would please bow your head and join me. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to meet together. Please help us to come together to make this business reflect your kingdom, breathe life into our ideas and decisions, and help us to build a team that has a love and respect at its heart. Lord, come, give us the inspiration to be the best we can be. May we be a shining example of your goodness and truth within the workplace and community in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. The pledge to the U.S. flag and the Texas flag will be given by Dr. Lasagna Avery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the budget workshop, and the presenter is Dr. Martin Smith.
All right. Thank you, Madam President and Board members. Good to see you this evening. Thank you for our team being here and others that are in attendance. Tonight, the purpose of our budget workshop is to prepare our board with information and explanation so that you have the data that you need to guide your decision-making as it relates to the budget. We also have key updates on legislation that are really hot off the press. We want to be able to explain the federal funding and the plans associated with the learning loss, property value information, tax information, and personnel-related information are a few items that we have on our agenda for this evening. You're going to hear from several staff members who have responsibilities in very specific areas of the presentation. It's definitely took a team effort to get prepared for our budget workshop, and we have lots of thinking and research and individuals prepared to come and address any individualized questions that you may have as we go through the process. The goal is to get direction from you tonight so that we can begin finalizing the budget and bring to the board a budget on June 21st at our June 21st board meeting. Just to kind of get you logistically oriented, you have your budget binder. That binder has the PowerPoint information that we will be reviewing with you this evening. And then in your left pocket, you have several documents that are all personnel-related. When Ms. Brown gets up to share her part of the presentation, we'll be referencing those. One reminder, as you ask questions, you know, we are wanting to capture this information in our minutes, and so if you could just be mindful to speak into the microphone, that way we can capture your question and make sure that that information is captured in the minutes. So, thank you. We're ready to get started. We're going to go ahead and call up Dr. Bigby and get started.
While he's reaching the podium, I want to thank each of you for the information that you have provided to build this budget. It wouldn't be possible without your information and input, so we appreciate that.
Good evening. It seemed like we'd done this before, but it's all good. Okay, next slide, please. The timeline is getting much shorter. We started presenting you back in February. The workshops tonight, we'll publish the notice of the budget hearing in the paper as we legally have to do. We'll hold a public hearing and then ask you to adopt the budget, not the tax rate, at the 21st board meeting. July 1st, the new year budget begins, and around the 24th, we'll actually get the values that we built the budget off of. We have to speculate at this point, but we've been pretty good at speculating in the past. It's been pretty steady is how the early estimates and how the final values work out. So, we'll be ready to go. Next slide, please. You've seen this numerous times. We built the 2021 budget off of an ADA or average daily attendance of 11,280. The state has granted us a hold harmless ADA based on last year of 11,165. Our actual ADA is actually a little less, but it's been hovering around 10,880. It's counting the ones on campus and the ones that are virtual. So, you can see at the hold harmless, we're about $3 million short of what we had budgeted. If we hadn't have gotten the hold harmless, we'd have been about $5 million short. They did use the last six weeks to determine if we were covered by the hold harmless or not. If you remember, we had to at least reach the level of attendance of the people that were actually on campus in the first semester, which was 34.1%. Our calculations, we beat that by about 10%, so we should be covered by the hold harmless in all six weeks. We actually won't know until September. That's when TEA gets enough information to figure that out. Later in the presentation, I'll explain to you how they're doing a wonderful now-you-see-me day, you don't, with the funds for that, but at least we will have the funds for it. So, it looks like that all looks good to still be about $3 million revenue short. Okay? Next slide. Please stop me if I run by this too quickly, and some of it, there's a lot of words on here. Some key legislation that's passed, the governor hasn't signed it. He has till June the 20th to sign these, and in Texas, he doesn't have a pocket veto like at the United States level, at the president level. There, if he doesn't sign a bill, it's automatically vetoed. In Texas, if he doesn't sign a bill, it's automatically law. And so, June the 20th, if he hasn't signed these, they become law, or if he signs them earlier, they'll become law. So, I'll assume that most of them will become, but you never know what's going to happen in Austin. The first one there is Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 2. Those were the appropriations bills. They passed those with full funding, and House Bill 3, that was passed two years ago. And if you remember, the House put a rider on it that said the state could not supplant our local funds or state funds with the federal funds. And when it got to the conference committee, it was taken out, so that didn't make it through. So, it allows them to supplant basically anything they want with the federal funds instead of the state funds. Going across the top, House Bill 4545. If you remember, if you failed at 5th and 8th grade STAR before, then you were retained unless the grade committee or, I don't know exactly all of that, but that was removed. Instead of having to do particular things, now you have to provide at least 30 hours of individual instruction, and that can be during the school year or in summer school. But the 5th graders don't have to worry about being retained because they missed too, too many questions on STAR. House Bill 547, this has been brought up in many sessions, but now a home school or private school individual that wants to participate in UIL activities at our school and level within our boundaries, they can now do that.
Are charters excluded there?
Excuse me?
Excuse me, are charters excluded in that group? I know they have sports sometimes in the charters, but...
Yeah, from my understanding, it's basically any kid that's school age can do that. I would hope if they were going to participate, they'd leave the charter and come to school here, and that's what happens a lot of the times. It's any school age child. I think this is probably a Pandora's Box that's going to be opened, but we'll see. Senate Bill 1225, I thought this was interesting. If we shut down again, we're still responsible to respond to public information requests, even if we're all at home. I guess somebody got upset because they'd asked for public information when everybody was quarantined and couldn't provide that. So, according to this statute, we have to make sure we provide it if someone requests it. House Bill 1524 is a House Bill 3 cleanup. There was quite a bit of stuff. As you pass any kind of law like that, as quick as they passed it, there's going to be some things that adversely affect other people. Most of it was the Kate waiting for small and very small school districts. We got a little bit of adjustment in that. We picked up about $50,000, but most of the increase is for the smaller districts.
Are we, I know I have a lot of weird questions on this part, but are we considered midsize?
No, that's 1,600. We're just in that never, never land. It's, once you get above midsize, above 1,600, we're all in the same group. And midsize and small, which is, they get an additional adjustment to the basic allotment where it's 6,300 for all of the rest of us there. Even the very small rural districts almost get double that because they're, you know, they're just sparse. They don't have many students. Now, we're kind of in that never, never land that we don't get a whole lot of breaks. House Bill 3261, they moved the online testing requirement after the fiasco we had this year with it to 2324, and there's also a 75% cap on the multiple choice questions. They moved that to 2223. Adaptive sports, UIL must develop an active sports program for middle school and high school for disabled students, which I think that'll probably be a great thing. Senate Bill 1444 is TSR Active Care, TRS, which is what our employees are covered by. Most districts are. This allows people to drop out. Once you got into it, you couldn't get out, and there was enough pressure from, I guess, some influential districts that wanted to go back and self-insure in those areas. So, now they have the ability to do that. That could, depending on how wild it gets, that could wreck the whole system, because the whole idea of keeping the premiums down even where they are now is bulk, having more people in the system. So, we'll see how that works out. They're also going to have an open enrollment for TRS Active Care for districts that are not in it. If they want to get into it, they can. So, we'll see how that works out. It's amazing how a piece of legislation gets passed for one little area, and then it affects the entire state. Senate Bill 1438, disaster funding. I thought this was interesting. There's extra pennies that you, as a Board, can set on a tax rate when there's been a disaster in your area, and most of the time in Texas, that's a hurricane or tornado. But they make sure that a pandemic is not included in that. So, if we have any more expenses because of a pandemic, you can't raise those pennies on your tax rate. I'll reserve comment on that one. House Bill 1603 is the individual grade committees. This was going to expire. That allows a committee to decide if a student can graduate if they haven't passed all of the STAR or the end of course, and that has been lengthened. It's been, actually, there's no termination date on it now, so they continued those when they were going to terminate them this year. Senate Bill 1831, child trafficking, requires posting of schools regarding increased penalty for child trafficking. I hope that's really going to help by putting those on the campus. I think if somebody's probably trafficking children, they're not going to worry too much about increased penalties, but hopefully it'll, you know, if it deters one person, then it's worth it. Senate Bill 168, active threats defines requirements for conducting active threat exercises. It includes notification of parents and then making sure they're age-appropriate. There's been quite a lot of discussion about the trauma that it's caused at some of the younger ages when there was some active shooter drills, and those are pretty realistic House Bill 3979, limited topics. This is the bill that's extremely controversial. In fact, there was a workshop today I was listening to that David Thompson, who's been an attorney, he was actually at TEA for years and has been in the business, he feels like the, he's surprised that lawsuits haven't already started, where it actually limits the type of history that we're allowed to teach in the classroom. I'm not the scholar on this, but it makes sure that a teacher's not required to teach history in light of current events. They can certainly do it the way I read the bill, but you can't require it as part of your curriculum. This will be very controversial. It lists all the documents that must be used to teach history, and certainly, I wouldn't disagree with most of those, but it's very limiting on any kind of academic freedom in the classroom. But we'll see. I'm sure there'll be some lawsuits over that. Senate Bill 1267, professional development. It requires ESPEC to make a list of professional development areas for the state and for the district to adopt a professional development policy. I didn't look. There's probably something in our policy already. I'm sure there is administrative procedures, and hopefully, we'll work that out to where it's a procedure more than a policy. Senate Bill 179, as counselors requires 80% of a counselor's time devoted to counseling in situations where that can't be done. If it's not feasible, then the district has to provide an explanation, and that's probably most of the rural districts where you've got one counselor for the entire district. Any questions on any of these? I went through them very quickly, but I'll be happy to give you a 300-page document that I got in a workshop yesterday that explains it all in deep detail, but honestly, I haven't read it all, so... Once again, they'll become law on the 20th if they're signed by the governor or if they're not signed by the governor. The only way you can stop them is to actually sign a veto.
Can I ask you about that last one? I assume that's for all counselors?
Yes, that's the way I read it.
And do we currently, are we there?
I couldn't tell you, but I would bet that we're not.
Absolutely not. We are not nowhere close to that. It would take quite some time to get to that point.
Wow.
And I understand the reason it's there, and it's a wonderful thought if you can afford to do that, but you either have to replace or add a lot of people for the other duties or add a lot of counselors. We'll see how that works out. But no, I would guess there's not a district in the state that's there, certainly not one that I've ever worked in. Anything else?
I have a question. So, in light of what you just said, is there like a deadline? I know that, I guess the law would probably take effect maybe 90 days after.
Typically, they'll start on September the 1st. Some of them are passed with, if they pass with a 2/3 majority, they go effective immediately, but most of them are set up for September the 1st.
Okay, and then we just talked about the 80%, that that would be hard for not only Duncanville, but probably most. So, is there a deadline by which we have to meet this?
I didn't see one in there. It's just, I think everybody will be writing an exception for it until we can get to that point.
Okay, and then also Senate Bill 776, which requires sports program, adaptive sports program for disabled students. How will that be addressed?
It's a very short bill, and what I read, it just said, you need to do this.
And then, will there be monies, are there monies in this proposed budget to meet this goal, or...
Not specifically for that, but I'm sure we can meet it within the budget.
With the funding that we have.
Nothing else. We do have some federal funding that we can use.
And it looks like maybe those are the only two that might require additional funding to meet. I know we're getting $50,000 as a result of HB 1524, and so...
But that'll be designated money that has to go toward career in technology. But we'll certainly find a way to fund it, particularly with the federal money that we're going to have.
Okay. Thank you.
Ready to move on? Okay, next slide. These are just a few of the ones that didn't make it. Moken Casey, who does, we contract with for a lot of this, they kept up with 1,000 different bills this year. There's like 1,600 bills that are filed each time, and some fail, and sometimes it's really good when they do fail. Virtual school funding, we all felt sure this was going to pass. It didn't. I think at the end, they were squabbling. I guess, you know, if they were kids, we'd give them a spanking and put them in timeout, but, so they didn't get a lot of the bills passed that, hopefully, they'll come back and do it in a special session, but it'll be a little too late then for most districts. But it would have provided the funding if we, which we talked to you about, the VIP program, a virtual program for our district. You can do it, but there's no funding for those students. So, we'd lose probably $5,500 per student if we went ahead with that virtual program. Hopefully, if they pass it in a special session, we can gear up maybe and do it next year and be totally prepared to do it. Transgender sports participant, I can't get my teeth back in. It's hard to say. This has probably come up in every legislature in the United States, and I don't know of any that, well, there's been a few over in the South that have passed it, but it would prohibit transgender students from participating in sports other than their birth gender, and that didn't pass. My understanding from the House and the Senate was that was up to UIL to deal with, not legislation. And fund balance, remember, we talked over and over about the guy that was going to regulate our fund balance, and I think I told you then, it's probably not going to go anywhere, and it didn't. He also tried to get the one where we had to put 40% of any federal money we got into fund balance, and all we have to do is read the law, and that couldn't happen anyway. So, there was no action on fund balance, so at least for two years, they'll leave us alone. Okay? Quite a few more failed, but those are ones that were pretty pertinent to us. Okay, next slide. ESER, it's become a dirty word for me. I don't know about you guys. It's Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief is what that stands for in case you're on jeopardy, then you'll be ready to talk to them. ESER 1 was begun basically a year and a half ago when we first started in the pandemic and everyone was at home, and they were giving us money to help us get through the pandemic. Well, it turns out that they did, but they took the state funding back that we would have had for that. So, they, we used $2,653. We chose to use it on payroll, and that was one of the areas we could choose to do it in, so we did that. They took $2,653,053 back from state funding, so that was a washout. Also, part of this was a technology purchase opportunity. We bought quite a bit of technology. If you remember, you approved $2.8 million. We filed all of that as part of the grant. By the time they got through whittling it down, and they've been whittled this since then, that's down to about, we should get about $1.3 million of that 2.8 back in federal funds, and those are supplemental. They're not supplanting. You did a good thing with that much technology money, and I was really hopeful you would get most of it back, but it looks like that's not going to be the case. But we'll get some. They keep saying the check's in the mail, but we still haven't seen it, and we filed this in November. ESER 2, this week, they released this money. Our district's supposed to get it, 11,754,665. They also announced five days after the session was over, they were going to supplant any of the hold harmless funds that we were going to get from this year by holding us harmless with those federal dollars. It really remains to be seen how they're going to calculate how much that is for us. My calculation, it's a little over $2 million, which would still allow us $9 million out of this to use within the framework of the ESER grant. We'll talk a little more about that in a minute. ESER 3, that's, we're in the process now of beginning this. There were two allocations, and they had to split it up because of the way the state was still arguing with the federal government over some things. So, our first allocation's over 16 and 1/2 million. When we file that grant at the end of July, we'll file for that amount. Hopefully, by then, we'll have the other $8 million. So, that's 24 million out of that. From what we've been told today, that's all supplemental. There won't be any supplanting with that. So, that's money we can use mainly to work on the learning loss that's taken place over the last year and a half for us not being able to have students all here. If you add all of those up, that's a little over $34.6 million in federal money, and once again, we've lost some of that ESER 2, but we still ought to get over $30 million to spend over the next three years. Actually, ESER 3 has to be spent over the next three. ESER 2 has to be spent over the next two years.
How do you know they want to supplant 3? Can't they go back in five days or whatever and say, sorry?
Yes.
That's crazy.
They can. I don't think they will with that part, but I'm real leery about ESER 2, that there's not going to be something else that pops up out of that. It was amazing that they didn't release the ESER 2 information till after the session was over, and then they said, oh, we're going to supplant with that. So, I have a strange feeling those people in power knew exactly what they were doing, particularly when they took the clause out of the House Bill 3 cleanup bill that was going to prohibit the state from supplanting with it. And I guess they'll, in fact, I saw a quote from old Huberty. He's kind of been a thorn for us, but he said, well, those districts don't have anything to fuss about now. Well, sit down, Mr. Huberty. I can fuss with you things, but I can't. I'm retired. I can do that. Anyway, it's not a windfall, but it's a pretty good deal that, better than what we thought we were going to get from the state if they don't do something goofy with the rest of it. And we're in the planning stages now of what to do with this, and there's some great ideas coming forward. Does that make a little more sense of ESER? If it does, y'all tell me, because I'm not, I get up every morning wondering what I'm doing.
Are all these checks in the mail?
That's so far. Actually, they're like regular federal grants. We have to spend the money and then get reimbursed for it. So, it's even scarier when you spend five or $6 million and then...
And trust them?
Actually, I might have trusted the federal government to send it quicker than it would the state government, but it all filters through the state. Never mind. That was ugly. Next slide. These are things that are allowable under ESER, and that's ESER 2 and 3. They've really opened up what you can do with the money. This is not where we're in our plan or anything. These are just the areas that they say you can put them under this umbrella. Any expense allowed under federal grants, there's three different federal grants that we have now, and basically, we can buy anything we want with them except gifts and food. So, we'll have to buy the food out of our budget, and we can't buy federal food. I bet the Washington, they buy food. Coordination or preparedness for response efforts in case there is another pandemic. There's a piece in there that says you can spend the funds to get ready to do that. Activities to address needs of low income, and these are, this is the way it's written, low-income students, children with disabilities, English language learners, racial and ethnic minorities, homeless and foster students. So, you can see that's pretty broad when it talks about activities. Developing and implementing preparedness procedures and systems, once again, in case there is another pandemic, sanitation and cleaning supplies, which we can actually use some of this. use some of this because we're still buying quite a few of PPE, personal protective things for next year, not knowing exactly what we're going to have. Preparedness for long-term closures, that's added technology. That's that kind of opened it up if we need to improve infrastructure and able to serve our students when they're at at home, and even meals can be covered by that. Purchasing educational technology, mental health services and supports, which is a big piece of what we're dealing with now. Summer learning after school and other targeted needs, addressing learning loss among students. One is high-quality assessments to see exactly where they are. Evidence-based activities, information and assistance to parents, and tracking student attendance, any of those that fall within it. School facility repairs and improvements to mitigate virus transmission and exposure, update indoor air quality, cost to maintain operation of school and continue to employ existing staff, and this is what we did with ESER 1. Then they took it back. And 20% of ESER 3 has to be reserved for addressing learning loss. From what we've the little we've talked about this so far, we'll be way beyond that 20% because that's that's the key to what we're here for is to try to catch students back up. So those are the allowable areas. Once you choose an area or choose things that fall within them, then it has to be feverishly documented because we will be audited with that much money. We'll there'll certainly be a federal audit, so. And we will have nothing to hide because it will be, but we have to spend a lot of time documenting these things. Thoughts, questions?
Madam President, I have a question. So you mentioned that we have three years to spend the money?
Yes, ma'am.
So what happens within that three years that's allotted to spend it? What happens if we don't show expenditures towards these things? Do they penalize you, or do they?
Yeah.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, if you can't if you can't show where you've used them for something that fits into these, then you have to pay them back.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it's just like most federal federal grants. If you if you don't actually utilize it the way you're supposed to, or or like special ed, if you don't spend as much money as you should, then you have to send the money back.
Okay, got you.
But we will make sure we don't get in that situation.
Right.
We've never had to had to go spend more than $2 or $3, so it's it's been an interesting process. I've heard a representative say one time, well, you just want us to throw money at it and try to solve it. So, well, it might work. You've never tried, so. But the federal government's trying now.
Thank you.
Thing else? Once again, those that's the umbrella that covers what we spend those on, and once these are all put together, then we'll write a plan with those.
I'm sorry, I have one more question I just thought of. So there's not an allotment for salary, is that correct? Like when they say providing mental health services and supports, I mean, that doesn't include, could it include a salary?
Yes.
Oh, okay, it does.
Yeah, you can you can hire personnel. You just have to be careful that at the end of the the funding period, that there may not be funds for that position.
Right, okay.
It's like any grant, you if you if you employ people under that typically the contract you'll put a, you know, you may not have this position in three years.
Right, because when I see planning summer learning after school and others targeted needs, that's to me just that's a salary for someone. You're going to have to hire someone in that place to to provide those type of, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Needs.
A lot, and everybody's going to be going after the same thing statewide, so it's.
Thank you.
Just to your point, you're exactly right. In the next couple of slides, we're going to be talking in greater detail about some of the positions that we're going to have to add to execute the plan that we have in place. I also, I believe it's either later this week or first part of next week, am attending a meeting with our local superintendents, and we're all going to be talking about the plan to hire tutors and retired teachers so that, you know, since we're all in this area, addressing some similar challenges. And so we're going to be approaching that in a coordinated effort. Of course, I'll be updating you all on that.
Thank you for that.
And they actually relaxed the retiree hire to where it's it's easier to go back and hire retired people without losing any of their their annuity from the state, because realizing that we're going to all be hunting people like that. So it may may be interesting. We may have a bidding war to to get people to help us. Okay, next slide, please. Potential plans to address this. We've we've done some some preliminary discussions in our groups, instructional programs and interventions. One was a dual-language training for teachers, accelerated instruction and tutoring for special education, sheltered instruction for training to support secondary English language students, embedded professional development, differentiated instruction and monitoring, formative assessment testing, training, I think that, well, never mind, we'll get to that, sorry, special ed and dyslexia training for general ed teachers. And these are all things that somebody in one of these departments had felt like it was important, especially a pair of professional development and additional dyslexia staffing in sports. Learning environment and resources, student one-on-one device access, we can do that through the the grant, increased wireless infrastructure, enhanced mode of classroom technology, improving air quality through HVAC systems. We've discussed that in depth with TEA, and there there certainly will allow the HVAC replacements if it's improving the air quality. Social emotional support, there's a panorama SEL, which I know zero about, but some of these folks behind me do. Restorative practices, and there's a NOVA crisis response training for counselors. If you'd like to, something deeper on these, I'll be happy to step out of the way and let somebody else talk to you about those.
As you think about that, as you think about that, Board, I'm sure you may have some questions. Wanted to give you some context. So we've done some extensive planning to even get to this point. This is not a comprehensive, all-inclusive list. This is kind of like our first look. We've categorized it in five major categories. You see those five major categories there, and through many of the individuals that you see represented out in the audience today and other staff members, we've really prioritized some of the key areas that are most vulnerable, what we all deem as, you know, high priority areas, and we've listed those. So these are areas that we're going to start and target in year one and year two and year three in terms of utilizing the funding. And it's fluid. We will be making adjustments as we go, but we will need to provide a plan similar to this for grant purposes. And then we'll need to provide an update for the community to basically outline what we're going to be doing. So I wanted to give you that context as you kind of wrap your arms around what all these five categories mean.
Now, there's two more on the next slide, but I wanted to stop here in case you had some questions about these. If they've become part of the plan, then we'll certainly bring them back to you in more detail. Okay, next slide. High-quality teachers, higher gap, and that's a that's a locally created word, teachers and tutors are gaining and growing academics performance. That's what Dr. Smith was talking about, hiring tutors. Crease signing bonus and stopping for hard-to-fill areas. We continue to have trouble filling out quite a few areas. Extend the teacher hiring schedule to 30-plus years with adjustment. If you will remember, our hiring schedule stops at 20. This would allow us maybe to reach some people with more experience. Implement a three-year plan for acquiring ESL certification for all ELAR, English Language Arts, teachers K-12. Access to school, increase hourly rate for bus drivers. If you've driven through any district, you've seen a bus parked out there somewhere that said, we need drivers, and we're really having difficulty having enough drivers. Head bus drivers sign on retention stoppings, provide registered licensed nurses on all campuses, and increase registered nurses' days to 192. The impact of that's about $2.1 million per year. So you can see that that adds up in a hurry, but I'm not too sure that the high-quality teachers one is not going to be the biggest impact we have. So it's certainly where we ought to spend some money.
A little later, too, in the presentation, you'll get some detail on that when Ms. Brown comes up and shares some insight.
Okay, once again, we're in the planning stages of that. All right, next slide. Now we get into the real interesting part, the numbers. Property value, if you'll see how this has moved from 2017, 18 up to what we're estimating for this year, it's made some drastic jumps, sometimes over 10%, and this time, it's not going to take much of a jump. And this is the total property value of the district, and most of a lot of that's going to be because of the hotels and restaurants. Those values have dropped considerably because of the pandemic. The initial numbers we got were a little over 3% increase, which is the lowest since I've been here, and typically, that filters down by the time we get to certified values. It usually drops 2% to 3% or even more. So we're estimating that maybe we'll we'll see a 1% value growth this year. We'll know for sure in July. As you can see, it's a different kind of year already, and it's probably going to be with us a while. I don't know that the Metroplex housing market follows this trend since it's just gone crazy, but the businesses have really, there's really been cost costful to those people the pandemic has. Okay, next slide. This one's a little bit busy, but it's tax rates from Dunkinville and some of the surrounding districts. The blue bar is the the maintenance and operation tax for this year. The yellow bar is the interest and sinking tax rate, and the red bar is the total of the two. You can see ours was 1.0167 for maintenance and operation and 0.35 for for debt service, or a total of just a little over $1.37 tax rate. You can see how we compare to the other districts around. The yellow line across there is is our level for the interest and sinking tax rate, the blue levels for the M and O tax rate, and the reds for the total. We're projecting there on the far right-hand side, because of our lack of value growth and our lack of student growth, dropping the tax rate, the M and O tax rate by 3.17 cents. And because of of the debt and the way that our debt structure's laddered out, we believe we can drop the debt rate by a penny. So that's 4.17 cent reduction in the tax rate for next year. And I did some quick math. The average taxable value last year was 167,970 for a home, and that would save them $72 a year in taxes. Not much, but it's better than raising it $72 a year. And then, you know, their value may go up a little bit that offsets that, but before, our tax rate's been steady, and then their value went way up. So hopefully, that'll help our taxpayers some.
Can I ask about the comparison with Cedar Hill? What's that attributed to?
Part of it is is the tax rate that everybody started with. And when they started compressing, we were at $1.17, and it we've had to compress it down every year. That's the the reduction in property tax bill that happened four years ago. And I'm assuming they probably started a little lower than we did to start with, and their debt rate's pretty close to what ours is now. But that's that's my assumption. I really didn't study them in depth, but I but I can. I can go back and look at that.
They may have a lot more businesses that have a lot bigger landmass than we do.
Yeah, a lot of it's, well, almost everybody has more business than we do, except Highland Park, maybe. They don't need any with Jerry Jones. Anyway, I think we we certainly, by being able to reduce the tax rate, we're we're very competitive with our neighbors and and probably a bit ahead of some of them. Once again, our our M and O tax rate's dictated by formula. You don't you don't have any, well, you can lower it, but you can't raise it any higher. That's why we're an independent school district. Isn't that funny how they just keep taking removing that independent part of it?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Need to add state in there somewhere, Texas.
Okay, next slide. But this is what we put together so far of the budget. You can see the operating tax rate for general operating is .9859. That's dictated by law. Debt service rate of 34 cents or a total of 13259. We think we're going to begin the fund balance with a little over 64 and a half million. I've been telling you it's going to be worse than that. Part of the the reason it's not worse is is we haven't spent all the budgeted funds and expenditures because we didn't have all the kids on campus. We didn't spend quite enough. Now, the last two weeks, they've been trying to spend it all, but that's the way it typically works. But when you project it out, I think we'll be able to offset some of the funds that we spent out of fund balance with not spending all of expenditures. So I'm thinking maybe less than a $3 million of loss there. So we're still looking at a very good fund balance at the end of this year. I can see child nutrition. That fund balance may disappear. That funding is really not done well since we haven't had kids here to eat. You know, we get reimbursed by kids eating meals. So we'll just have to see how that works out at the end of the year. The federal government's supposed to help with that, but that check's in the mail, too, I think. And you see the debt service. We were initially going to spend some some of the funds out of debt service when you pass the TRE, but we've gotten out of where we're totally independent of any other funding. The debt service is paying its way now. Once again, because of your insight of having that debt structure the way it is, it doesn't go up. It's pretty well flat, and that's a blessing. Local intermediate, I think we may have a question or two. The local intermediate, local is the tax collections. The intermediate, and we've always called it that, and it probably doesn't make a lot of sense, that's all the funds that we collect other than taxes locally. It's rental of facilities, it's athletic revenue, it's interest, what little interest we make off of deposits. So it's anything that's generated at the local level. And our budget, there's almost $2 million of that comes from those different areas. Our athletic income was has certainly been down, but we're looking for that to come back next year. State program, most of that is is the foundation school program and available school. About $6 million of it is funny money. It's money that they give us, and then they make a spin for the state's contribution to TRS. It's called TRS on behalf, and the way the system works is is there's a percentage that's taken out for every employee, and when there's an expenditure, there's a revenue that's generated with it, so it just washes. But it's included in there. The legislature wanted to make sure people knew they were spending that money on behalf of the district, so it raised everybody's budgets, but it's it's not a true expenditure. Federal programs, there's a little more there, certainly than we've seen in the past. But you can see, we come out to total revenue of 126,362,362, oddly enough. A little over $8 million in child nutrition. That's up from last year. We've, if you remember, we've added seven instructional days, so we had to have the people that that take care of students, we had to add those days to their contracts. So it costs a little more to do that. And then the debt service, that's that's just generated to pay our debt. 153.2 million dollars total budget for those three areas. Okay, next slide. This gets really small, but it's the expenditure by function. You can see down there, of course, the the largest expense we have is instruction, which it should be. You can see that really, and I will have a comparison of all this in your budget book on the 21st, so you can really see how we move from year to year, but it's all pretty close to what it was last year because it didn't go up much. But you can see each area, of course, food service has some expenditures in in maintenance and in security, and the debt service is all on one line. So you can see where those funds are spent. And once again, instruction-related, and I'll have some graphs for you. when we do the actual budget that shows the, the percentage of, of the funds that actually go into instruction related versus administrative. Projected fund balance at the end of the year in the general operating fund, we're projecting not spending anything out of fund balance next year. So that would give you 51.2% of the budget in fund balance. Child nutrition, 492,651, but that's a, that's a variable number. And a 63% fund balance in debt service, which if we wind up with another bond, that'll, that'll cut the interest way down by having that fund balance. Good situation on all of them. They've been good stewards and, and plus taking care of people. Okay, next slide. Per ADA, we've always broken it down so you can see how much money is spent per average daily attendance. You can see 2021, once again, we were budgeting off 11,280. So it was quite a bit more ADA in 2021. We're budgeting off of 10,876. So you can see that we've spent, we're spending about $500, $450 more per ADA next year than we spent in the, we budgeted last year. And that's, that's mostly due to a decrease in ADA. So it brings, brings that number up if you don't reduce your expenditures. So it was 11,161 last year and 11,618 this year per ADA.
In studying this, I think I studied wrong.
Okay.
Because I was kind of thinking, and then my mind shifted. The original bu, budget for 2021, of course, was a guess at that time.
Yes, ma'am.
Wouldn't approve that. So the proposed budget is not based off of that budget. It's based off of actual. And then I saw categories that the state is going to say, we're going to need money for this because we just passed this law. And, and then our wish list, we had some things that are going to be, but that's going to be from the SIR grants.
Yeah.
So it's okay that the budget looks a little low. Okay.
Yeah, for, for maybe the first time in all our lives, it's okay that it is. And it came at a great time for us since our ADA has gone down and we've lost some state funding. So it's a, it's a godsend almost. I mean, I. Okay, next slide. Fund balance, once again, what I talked about earlier. I think the unspent funds are going to offset quite a bit of, of the things on the right that, that you, you spent out of fund balance or you authorized us to spend out of fund balance. So we're, we're going to, I'm just projecting in this. Once auditors get a hold of it, it'll look a little different, but that we'll be down about $3 million. But considering it's still at $64 million, we're in, in great shape fund balance-wise. There's people around us that would certainly be envious of that. All right, next slide. Once again, as we discussed with you a couple of meetings ago, you brought up some things that you wanted to see covered in this budget. And we put together lists of things that we'd been over the past, been working on within those areas. This is a little different presentation of that. But it shows you the things that we've been able to accomplish in prior budgets. Not meaning that we're anywhere near where we want to be in all of those areas, but it's, there's been a lot of thought in those areas. So administration's been thinking a whole lot, just like you have, about where the budget ought to go and how it ought to be developed. Be happy to read those to you, but most of it, we talked about last time. If you'd like to go from 1 to 1, I'd be more than happy to. Nothing else that'd give you something to read when you're sitting around watching TV. Okay, next slide. And now I'm going to sit down for a little bit unless Ms. Brown really educates you on some things.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bigby. Before we get started talking a little bit about the hiring schedule and the step schedule, I would like to draw your attention to the information that's in the pocket of your binder. Earlier in the presentation, Dr. Bigby spoke to us about some of the, the ideas that we were looking at as it relates to SIR III funds. And if we could potentially go back to that slide, it's the, the last two pieces of the SIR III funding. Thank you so much. Go forward. One more, one more, one more. There we go. Thank you so much. I want to speak to you a little bit about these items that are here because they are critical to us recruiting and retaining staff. And so it's important that we talk a little bit about those. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have as well. The first one is the gap teachers and tutors. You heard the information presented that the state has relaxed the penalties as it relates to hiring retired teachers. And so for Duncanville, we're looking at calling that a gap teacher or a gap tutor. That gap teacher or gap tutor could be a retired teacher. One of the pieces that they have included is that they are only able to work part-time. And so we have created a, a schedule whereby a retired teacher may be able to work about three days a week. Looking at our calendar coming up at a, at an hourly rate that would make them want to come and work. And for us, we're looking at a couple of things. One, we know that tier one instruction is, is a big piece. It's what we have to do, and we have to implement that with fidelity. And so that does not go away because of the learning loss. And so as a district, we are looking at how do we supplement? What else can we do as a district so that we decrease the teacher-student ratio? We have the space that we have. We have the number of classrooms that we have. But if we are able to tap into the expertise that our retired teachers can bring back to the district, while that teacher is working on tier one instruction, these individuals will, will be helping to close the gap. So that's one piece. We also have the possibility of hiring gap teachers who are full-time. You can't be retired and be full-time, but you could be full-time as a gap teacher if you are not retired. And then the tutors who are gap tutors do not have the qualification of being a certified teacher. However, there are requirements in their proposed job description of having an associate's degree. And they would work under, under the direction of those gap teachers who are certified to help further meet the needs of students. The second one you see there are the increased signing bonuses and stipends for hard-to-fill areas in your pocket of your folder. There is a document there that I'd like to draw your attention to. And it is called the incentives and benefits, Duncanville ISD incentives and benefits. You can see there, that information has been available on our website for quite some time, not in its version that you're looking at now, but our previous sign-on bonuses and stipends. And so in looking at our SIR III funds and what we can do to make sure we get the best and brightest here to help us close those learning gaps with our students, we've looked to potentially increase those sign-on bonuses and stipends. The market is great where we are. We know that. And we have to be able to compete. And so we want to be able to compete for those individuals to come to Duncanville. And so you'll notice on those hard-to-fill areas where there, it says $2,000 for sign-on bonuses in math and science. We've also added CTE. CTE is a very hard-to-fill area for us. We are very thankful for the DOI, the District of Innovation Plan, that allows us to at times hire a person who does not hold a teaching certification. However, in order to get that, that best person to our district, offering a sign-on bonus for all CTE positions would be great. You see that as $2,000. Most of those stipends there were 1,000, not stipends, I'm sorry, sign-on bonuses were $1,000. The increase you see is to 2,000. Those that are stipends were at $2,500. We're looking to increase that to $3,500. The way those amounts were set is by studying, doing our research, looking at who we recruit, recruit with, who we compete with, and making sure that they're not able to, to touch us so that we get, get the best individuals. The other piece that you see there is science. At our secondary campus, meaning, when I say secondary, I should be more specific and say the high school. At the high school level, science teachers have long received a sign-on, sign-on bonus and stipends. What is different on what you're looking at is we've added 7th grade through 12th grade there because we know that that is also a very important time for us to have people who are certified in science, especially with all the offerings we have at our high school. We have to make sure our students are ready. So we are expanding that, are asking or to expand that from 7th through 12th grade. And then last but not least, in as far as sign-on bonuses are concerned, on our last meeting, we spoke about how difficult it is to find certified bilingual teachers at this time due to the pandemic. It was already hard. Those individuals are taking five tests to become certified. During the pandemic, as testing sites closed, it delayed teachers who were working to get bilingual certifications and getting their tests. So they're catching up. So I may be on test three, but I need five before school starts so that I can get a job. And so one of the things that we are looking at is making sure that we can recruit those who are already certified. Several years ago, Duncanville ISD had the highest sign-on bonus and stipend for bilingual teachers. We had that $5,000 sign-on bonus, a $4,000 annual stipend. Most districts close to us have matched us. And so through SIR III funding, in order to be highly competitive, I'm going to jump out there first because we know we have people watching and want to do what Duncanville does, but we lead. And so we are looking to change that sign-on bonus to $7,000. Our bilingual teachers would receive half in year one and a second half in year two. And so as we thought through teachers who are currently with us, who are bilingual teachers, if you came this year, you came when we were given a $5,000 sign-on bonus. And so of course, the question would be, well, what about me? If they are receiving their year-two sign-on bonus, they would receive the 3,500, just like the teachers who are coming in. And so as far as the annual stipend is concerned, it is currently $4,000. We would be seeking to increase that to $5,000 annually. So what that does is it changes the game for us as a district because as we wait for individuals to pass their tests, those who are in other districts will look to Duncanville to come to serve and meet the needs of our kids now because that's when we need them. And then you will see us implementing a three-year plan for requiring ESL certifications for all of our ELAR teachers K through 12. That's nothing that's novel in the state. We've seen that happen in districts before. There are several districts close to us that have that requirement already, maybe for specific grade levels. The reason it's important to us is because in Duncanville, our student population needs that. And so we are, we are looking at a three-year plan, year one, to be focused on secondary ELAR teachers. As you know, we have a bilingual program, but at 6th grade, that ends. When those students exit, they go into the secondary level, it's critical that our, our ELAR teachers have the skillset, the tools need to meet the needs of students in their classrooms. And so that would encompass preparation for that test. It would encompass us paying for them to take the test and to have that certification added. And so that's a big deal for us. And in those three years, everyone who's currently here would have their ESL certification if they're an ELAR teacher. And then it would become a part of our job description and our requirement coming in. And we would still support them in getting that in their first year. Okay? Any questions about the points under high-quality teachers at this time?
Madam President, I have a question. Okay. Yes, thank you for that presentation. I have a question regarding, circling back regarding the recruitment of retired teachers. How, how many are we looking for them to actually do the tutoring? Are they more one-on-one? Is it going to be a group of students? What will they be responsible for?
Okay, yes, we have a, a job description. It's, it could look many ways. One of the ways it will look, maybe it could be one-on-one tutoring, depending on what the needs of a student is at that campus. But what we've outlined in our preliminary plan is how many each campus would get. So of course, at the elementary levels where they're smaller, they would get fewer number of gap teachers and tutors than at a high school. At the high school level, we are looking at targeting tested areas. And so we're looking at English 1 and English 2, those end-of-course exam courses where we need to lower the student-teacher ratio in the classroom so that we can make sure the student, the teacher is still pulling students who may not have a large learning loss because we, we need to make sure that they are continuing to improve while that gap teacher is there to support and intervene where there is loss to catch those students up. So it could be two students, it could be a group of five. It would be contingent upon the needs at that campus.
And are we looking at the test to determine whether or not they'll receive this type of assistance?
They'll be looking at a variety of data points. We've talked about the MAP testing that we'll have. We have lots of data points that we'll be able to, to look at. And then the campuses would be, be able to best plan to meet the needs of what that needs to look like at our campus.
And that's going to be part-time for that tutor to be handling the needs of that student?
Yes, ma'am. Part-time, but highly structured.
Yes.
So three days right now, we've looked at a Monday, Wednesday, Friday schedule, specific hours. And the plan will become more detailed as it's rolled out collaboratively.
So that brings me to this question is how are we going to advertise? Or what verbiage will we be using to encourage those to seek, you know, an opportunity to help close the gap?
Yes, we have looked at a marketing plan for that because the need is a right-now plan. And so social media will be a big piece, a huge push, and very specific to what we're looking for, the, with a link to take them to where they can find that job description, additional information. We have the contact information of all of our own retired teachers. And so that will be one of our first steps is making sure we communicate with teachers who've retired from us in the last three to five years so that they know of this opportunity. Because as long as they've been retired for 30 days, they are eligible to apply.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Are we considering offering stipends for teachers or administrators with doctorates?
We have looked at that in the past. At the, in your, in your binder, you, in the pocket, you see our new hire teacher and nurse schedule. Currently, as a district, we have, we have an additional $1,000 for advanced degree, and it's for their master's degree. Currently, we do not offer an additional $1,000 on top of that. But that is a piece that we've looked at in our compensation study in the past, and we'll continue to look at that as well.
That's it. I mean, when we're talking about highly qualified.
Yes.
I mean, the, the more education they have, the, the better. So we want to give them an incentive to come with us, even if they have doctorates.
Yeah, one of the things that we have considered and looked at in that, to your point, is what their doctorate is in. So in education, being very specific. Because if I have a master's in something that may not help me in my field or a doctorate in something that may not help me in my field. So that will help us to kind of narrow and really find those individuals. So, okay. All right. Okay, I can keep going. All right. And so the next part you see is the access to school. As we think about learning loss, of course, our minds go directly to the classroom and, and what happens there. But we want to make sure that students have access to the learning. Earlier, you heard us talk about the, our hourly bus, hourly rate, excuse me, for our bus drivers. Just a couple of weeks ago, you probably have seen it if you've been on 20. A lot of districts close to us don't have the benefit of having an internal transportation department as we do. And so they contract with an external company who will remain nameless. And that company now has billboards all of and down 20, 35 where they are starting bus drivers at $20 an hour with a $1,500 sign-on bonus. And so you can imagine, if you are a transportation driver in a district that has an internal workforce of drivers, then that is appealing. So they've been asking and looking and calling. However, we have been planning. And so you'll see, in order for our students to get to the learning and to those gap teachers and that quality tier-one instruction, we have to have drivers to get them to school. We have a large number of our students in Duncanville who ride the bus to school. And so if you look in your binder, you see a new hire schedule, pay schedule for bus drivers there. I mean, what we're looking at is not changing the pay grade of our drivers from OCS4 where they are. You can see across the bottom of that document what our minimum, our mid, and our maximum pay currently is for drivers. And so what we've done is within OCS4, created a matrix of hiring drivers starting at the midpoint. And so although they'd still be in an OCS4, if you are a bus driver coming to our district, our starting pay for a bus driver would be at that midpoint. And then you can see by years of experience, that doesn't get us to $20 an hour, but it makes us highly marketable. And so our drivers who are currently here would benefit that, from that as well. We've looked at how much it would cost if we had to make adjustments to make sure that they are there as well. That company does, doesn't have a few things that we know we can offer here in Duncanville. One is a consistent route. When you drive for a company like that, you change wherever they need you to drive. So they can't provide that. We do provide that. The consistency of where you're going to be, the students, those relationships you get to build with students. The consistency of where you're going to be, the students, those relationships you get to build with students, as well as the family environment that we have here in Duncanville is another part of our marketing plan, because we will still, would still be a little lower. And then, the last piece of that is the benefits. And you'll hear more about that. Duncanville ISD, that's a huge part. When we look at total compensation, you can't just look at how much you, you get on your check. And what you see, it's the $301 that you have approved to pay towards our benefits. So, when we're sitting with our drivers who are opting to go that route, and we really explain, okay, really, you make more here in Duncanville because you take benefits. And when you have to pay all of it, and sometimes they leave and come back. But, this is our idea to become marketable, highly marketable. And then, the second piece is to add a bus driver's sign-on and retention stipends. And so, although we may not have the same sign-on bonus that they have, offering something, and then for the drivers that are here and have stayed, matching that for them, so that we can get the students to the learning. The third that you see there is providing a registered or licensed nurse at all campuses. For years here in Duncanville, we've had a combination of registered nurses and health service aides. So, many of our campuses, our elementary and intermediate campuses, they share a registered nurse. So, they're, on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I'm here. On Tuesday, Thursday, I supported another campus. We know that the needs of our students are great. The pandemic taught us a lot, and our nurses have done an exceptional job. I mean, from testing of our employees to helping with the screening, from constantly being exposed when students or staff members are sick. And so, we know that it's very important that at this time, we take a step back and look at how we can provide a licensed, our registered nurse, or either an LVN or an RN at every one of our campuses. The other piece that we, we've, we've struggled with this year is when our nurse is out. Oh, my gosh! And so, having a qualified substitute to go in who knows our students, who knows how to give medication, all of those things, it's important. And so, we've looked at how we can provide that to all of our campuses. Our model, proposed model would have a registered nurse at the majority of our campuses, so 15 registered nurses, and then four LVNs. Of course, the high school has three, that's why it's more nurses than campuses. Our current health services aides would provide that, that rotating of substitute services that we need. So, if someone is out, that's where they go. Although, they also have a home at our larger campuses, or where we have special education units that have more sensitive students, that would be their homes. Okay? And then, the final piece for access to school is to increase the days for our nurses. They're currently on 187-day contract. And we're looking to increase them to 192 as we plan and prepare for the upcoming school years. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the access to school as well.
And let me jump in here. So, board members, as you get prepared to ask your questions and just processing all the information, although we are not adopting the budget tonight, the feedback that you give is critical, because we want to be able to market this like immediately, so that we can begin to get the staff that we need here. So, if there is any strong opposition to what you've heard, or you need more clarity, I would really need to know that tonight, so that we can plan accordingly. So, I'd like to use this time to work through that.
Okay. One question I do have. On the slide, slideshow thing, potential plans to address learning loss, there's a page one and page two. And the total there estimated impact is 2.1 million, correct? No.
The 2.1 is for the second page.
Is 2.1. Okay. That answers my question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The additional five days for nurses, what will they do for the additional five days?
That's the preparation, the training, making sure that we're ready. As our, the CDC guidelines and what we'll be looking at as it relates to COVID changes, we want to make sure that we are prepared. And so, the nurses have that 187 now, and there are things that are already scheduled to be on those days. So, it just gives that extra cushion to make sure that we are ready.
Okay. Is this toward the end?
It's at the beginning, it's on the front end.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a question. So, does the bus driver pay schedule push out? Or is the maximum 2091?
The maximum is 2091. So, that's where the OX4 ends, is at that 2091.
So, was there any consideration given to, you know, even increasing the hourly pay more than, you know, what's in this schedule?
Absolutely. We've looked at it from several different angles. One of the things is, there are other jobs in that pay grade of an OX4. So, we were trying to make sure that we kept a level of equity in the OX4 pay grade while doing something unique because of that, that position being so hard to fill. And so, if we created a span that was too large on our pay schedule, you'll see OX4, and then we move to OX5. Doing it this way keeps us from bleeding over into OX5. Once you increase the maximum on one pay grade, it's a domino effect. And then, it would have a larger budget impact across the board.
And are there any vacancies currently?
Absolutely. There are 21 bus driver vacancies currently, bus driver vacancies currently. So, this year, we've been able to manage, because we don't have all of our students back at school. And so, but on certain days, everyone in our transportation department is driving, including Mr. Hammerick. That's one of the requirements to work in the transportation department. There's only one position, the secretary, who does not have to have their, their ability to drive a bus. Every job description in transportation is a driver and whatever they are. And that's, that's because we have that need. If we only have the drivers we currently have when school starts, there is no way we'd be able to fulfill our routes.
And so, the maximum that they can make is 2091?
Yes. And that amount makes us highly marketable in the area. The company that I spoke of, they are not a school district. And so, their rates, of course, they can go whatever they can afford. But, in the school districts, it makes us very marketable. We'll be in the higher bracket by starting at our midpoint.
Okay. And are there any other incentives for like safe, you know, driving record or anything like that that we offer?
Not monetary currently. There are awards and different things like that and recognitions that our drivers get for being safe. But, right now, there are no monetary awards for that.
Okay. All right. But, I, I like everything that I've seen, you know, in the plan to address, you know, gaps in student learning, the, the tutors and, you know, all the other items.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Madam President.
Carla.
Carla.
Thank you, Kathleen. A question. Last year, when we gave our little appreciation benefit, the bus drivers received that also. Well, it might be an incentive, although we can't promise yet, but we're working on something like that. But, it would be a hiring incentive if you just sort of kind of mentioned that in the past, Duncanville has given nice little thank-yous. So, that, that, I mean, that $2,000 was really, I mean.
Yes, ma'am. We were very appreciative of that. And we're going to actually talk about that a little bit more on our next slide.
So, thank you for the feedback. So, we will begin our marketing.
One. I'm sorry, I have a question.
One other thing. Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead.
I just want, I just want a picture of, of the bus driver. So, he, this person drop, picks up in the morning. Are they, are they on a set schedule through the week? Or do they go home in the midday?
Yes, they do. We have drivers, depending on how many routes they drive, because you know how we have that tiered schedule for our, for our schools. So, a driver may be a four-hour driver, they may be a six-hour driver, they may be an eight-hour driver, based on the need. And so, yes, there are breaks in the day when students aren't moving around. In the past, sometimes in the middle of the day when there's no COVID, they do special routes. So, we may have a route way to pick up a homeless student. And those are called midday routes. And then, we have field trips. And so, those are all other opportunities where they have to earn like a extra pay.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Yes, ma'am.
My question, I think I heard this right. On the benefits and incentive page, about three-quarters way down, the sciences, I think you were going to expand it to seven to 12?
Yes, ma'am.
And it says nine to 12 on here.
We can make that update. Thank you.
Okay. And I appreciate your knowledge across the whole board of employment. I really do. Before, it was always auxiliary, professional, you know? But, your knowledge is very good.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Okay. All right. So, we will now move to, back to the other slide in the presentation, where we have the step skirt schedule versus the hiring schedule. And this is a very important piece. In HR, my team spends lots of time talking to staff members about this. And we often chuckle, because of course, it's very clear to us, because we do this every day. But, it's very important that we are able to explain this very clearly to our staff. When you look at school districts and you pull up a pay schedule for a school district, sometimes we think they're all created equal, and they are not. Some of school districts are on what we call a hiring schedule, and that's what we are on here in Duncanville. Other school districts are on what we call a step schedule. And so, we're going to walk through the differences between those, the benefits, and then some of the concerns. When you're on a hiring schedule, the document in your binder that says teacher hiring schedule, you see that it has been extended to 30-plus years. And so, one of the reasons we looked at in, in increasing that, it used to start, well, it currently stops at 21-plus years. So, if you had 21-plus years of experience, and you came to Duncanville ISD today, let's say you had 25 years of experience, we would only be able to hire you at the amount that's listed there, that $59,800. So, you're 21 years, and you're new. I'm 25 years, and I'm new. We both make $59,800 in Duncanville, unless we have a master's, and then we'd earn that $60,800. So, one of the things about a hiring schedule is, you can only make what's listed there if you're coming in. And right now, we stop at 21-plus years. So, on a hiring schedule, our pay, of course, is based on just that, how many years you have. And in order to get a raise, in order for your pay to increase, and this is for our teachers and nurses who are currently on this pay scale, and, and on this pay schedule in our district, they only get raises based on what you approve as a school board. So, if you said 2%, 1%, 3%, that is how their pay increases. Anytime that doesn't happen, their pay stays the same for that next year. That's not including any incentive, just their, their salary.
Is that inclusive of librarians and counselors? Or just teachers and nurses?
For the schedule that's in there, it's teachers and nurses. But, that's the same for everyone in our district. All other pay grades are on a, on a hiring schedule. It's the teacher one that is different in district, sometimes step, sometimes hiring. Yes, ma'am. All right. So, that hiring schedule allows flexibility in pay increases, because then, as a board, you can decide whatever that amount is, percentage that you want to give. And then, of course, we will respond accordingly and make that happen for our employees. Then, there's this longevity incentive built in to the structure. And in Duncanville, that has really paid dividends for our staff, because the longer a teacher has, or a nurse has been employed in our district, or in any position for that matter, they've benefited from the raises over the years. And so, that's when we see that the higher average pay, the longer you've been in Duncanville increases. And we'll see that on a slide coming up. And this is the model that's recommended by Texas, by TASB HR Services, and that's who we do our compensation studies with. They recommend that hiring schedule, so that we have that flexibility. On the other hand, there are many districts that are still on a step schedule. And so, when you hear people say, well, I can make more in this district, and we're losing a teacher for $3,000 more to this district, typically, that district is on what we call a step schedule. Okay? And so, their pay is based on the number of years of experience in the district, regardless, regardless if you just got there, or if you've been there 30 years. All teachers who have 30 years, they make the exact same amount. And so, that incentive for being in that district for a longer period of time is, is not there. It does not allow flexibility, that flexibility that we have for you to say this amount, this amount, because whatever you decide as a board, everybody has to get that on that step schedule. And then, of course, like I said, the longevity is not built in. All the teachers are making that same amount. And that'll, we'll be able to look at that in a different way on the next slide. So, this is something we look at all the time, as it relates to our teacher salary by years of experience. And so, when we talk about a market group, there are two different types of market groups. One is a market group that are districts that are pretty much your same size. For Duncanville, we don't have the luxury of doing that, because in the DFW area, as we know, districts are so close together. So, I can live in Duncanville, and I have access to all of the districts that are here listed, and I could get to them in 15, 20, 30 minutes at the most. That becomes a huge issue as it relates to marketing, because it does open up choice. And I know as districts, we like choice, but when it has our employees moving around, we don't like choice. But, that's, that's the nature of the beast. And so, if you look at this, this chart, it shows all of the districts that we compete with. And so, we, we have handpicked this market group for Duncanville, because when teachers leave, we are constantly looking at, well, where do they go? And so, this is our market group. Our current starting teacher salary at zero years of experience is at $53,000. And it's been there for the last two years. Okay? And so, that red arrow shows you where we fall, right in line with Cedar Hill ISD, Midlothian ISD. They're also starting at 53. And then, those above have a zero-year salary that is higher than ours. Okay? Now, on last year, the incentive that you were just speaking about, Ms. Fahy, that $2,000, it did increase the amount that a person took home last year. And so, that blue arrow would show where we would fall if that two, with that $2,000. We'd fall right there above Garland ISD. But, one of the things, when we do the incentive, it is fantastic and it's great. But, one of the things you'll hear staff members say is, that is not impacting my TRS, right? And so, we know for TRS and retirement purposes, excuse me, they're looking at our top three to five years of, of our salary. And so, when they're looking at their salary, that amount does, is not included as a part of their salary, that incentive. And so, but it's important for us to know, actually take home. And so, explaining this to our employees is important as well. Also, on this slide, it's important for us to know the amount of districts that we're talking about. And sometimes, places or, or organizations will push out information as it relates to teacher compensation. And that's great. But, it sometimes gets people nerfed up for, because they don't have the back knowledge. So, you look at a, at a document that has districts listed, and it may say Duncanville ISD is number 35. Out of however many. But, we don't know the back knowledge of that. 35 is great on that list, because you're in the top 48 who even made that list. If you're not on that list, then you need to start worrying, because there are 1,029 districts, right? And so, when you're saying 35 out of 48, that's not only the 48 districts in the state, we're looking at across the DFW area, how many districts? So, I always challenge our staff members to make sure that they know, just like we tell our, our students to do when they're researching, to make sure that it's a valid source, and that they have a very good understanding of that information. Okay? Next slide. All right. And so, when we look at our actual teacher salaries here in the district by year, this chart just depicts this in, in a different way that shows you where we are currently with five, 10, 15, and 20-plus years, as far as our hiring schedule, remember, which is different from our steps, a step schedule. This is if you have this many years of experience and you entered the district. The first, that second column shows that. When you pull our actual teacher salaries, these are the salaries of individuals who are in the district with five, 10, 15, or 20 or more years of experience, you see that their average teacher salary is higher. And that's because of those board-approved raises that they've gotten over time. Next slide. All right. And this just depicts it in a different way, in a line graph. The red line shows our market group. And the market group and their average salaries, that same group of districts that we looked at earlier, that red line shows what the average starting salary is, or the average for each of those years. The blue line shows where we are, that light blue line. And so, you can see, we are below the market, right? And so, in years where there's not a raise, if somebody else gives a raise, it just makes that line, you know, grow. And then, but the blue line, it's important for us to look at the dark blue line, because that's our actual salaries. That brings us closer to the market. And as I was talking about, as it relates to that hiring schedule, you can see at year 20, we exceed the market. You see that piece where we kind of go above the market? And that's that longevity piece staying in Duncanville ISD, that it benefits you to stay here longer. Okay? All right. Next slide. I think that's all for me. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Ms. Brown, thank you for the detailed report. What is, do you have the average number of years' experience that our teachers have in Duncanville?
Yes, ma'am. And I don't want to give you the wrong number, but it is low. Most of our teachers fall in that zero-to-five-year mark right now. And that's because we've had lots of retirements over the last, the last few years. So.
Thank you. Is that because of COVID as well?
We've, it has had some impact over this last year. But, we, we had a lot of, a lot of staff members who had been here for a long time, which was great. We hope they come back and be gap, gap teachers and tutors. But, as individuals retire, the teaching market is that way across the state, across the nation, because of the turnover rate nationwide. And so, you see a younger population of teachers coming in.
Right. Well, I'm excited to hear about the bilingual increase. And I think that's great. I just would like I just would like to see the marketing, or hope that the marketing would be aggressive in hiring for those areas that are in great need.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that y'all will do a great job in doing that, but I'm also guessing that everyone in the area too will be doing the same thing that we're doing.
Yes.
And my concern for that is because of the surge of immigrant children that come in, that we have teachers in place to meet the criteria, and that's what's on my heart.
Absolutely. And so the good thing is, we haven't seen anyone push out what we are planning to do yet, so we'll be first. So that's our goal.
Good.
Jackie?
I've noticed, I guess you said that most of the teachers are five years or less, or a number of them are.
A number of them are.
In looking at the teacher salary by years of experience, five to 20 years, we're close to the bottom, you know, of the scale. So what would be the recommendation or plan to address that in the future?
Yeah, so each year, as we go through this process, looking closely at that. We always are going to study our market, and then we're going to also look at the things that are a benefit to us. So one of the things that is going to, we're going to talk about on the next slide is just that, when you factor in our TRS piece, we pay $301 per month, the highest that I've seen close to us is $275. And so when you start factoring in some of those other pieces, we have to do a great job of selling what total compensation is. Because although our salaries may be, be lower in some of those areas, and we do have a gap to close there, there are some other benefits of things that you all have done for employees that we need to make sure that we're telling the story, that we're aware of that. So when they add that to their salary, they're able to see, okay, actually, I make this amount. So.
So what is our retention plan to, you know, keep the teachers here longer? And I know, you know, you proposed like bonuses and other things, but I'm just wondering, you know, how do we stop this?
Okay, yes, ma'am. One of the things is how people feel. I mean, you hear people say all the time, people, people don't care how much you know until they know how, how much you care. That is very, very important because the money that we put into professional development, all those things and training individuals, we want them to stay and stick. So part of it is the stress that comes with being in education, honestly. It is, teaching, being in education is not an easy job. You see a lot of people get into education now and they think, "Oh, this is, this is easy, I can do this." But the requirements, the expectations, the standard of excellence that's required here in Duncanville ISD, that part we want, we don't change, but we have to figure out a way of how to make sure people feel equipped to do their job and to do it very well, and to feel good about doing it because that's what makes people stay. So that zero-to-five-year, that's what you see. Oh goodness, by year three, I'm burnt out, I leave, I go do something else, and then here comes another new crop of individuals. For statewide, it's getting to students, like at the high school, our TAFI, our future teachers, and making sure that we are pushing students to that just as much as we're pushing them to STEM and to other areas. Those are all great, but we have to have people to teach for them to be able to get to those other, to those other fields. So that's another opportunity for us as well.
To your point, Ms. Kathleen, I received a phone call before the meeting, and just some good news, there is a teacher that has decided to stay with us. Because of the conversation that she had to encourage her to stay and to hear her out, she changed her mind and she's staying with us. So I won't divulge the name or the principal, but it was good to hear that what you're saying regarding their feelings or where they're at, she was heard and she just flipped and going, "You know what, this is where I need to be," and she changed, she pivoted back to Duncanville.
Yes, and we've had a couple of those.
Good, good to know.
People are burnt out, but they're coming back.
It was a good conversation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before we moved on, I looked at Cedar Hill while I had a chance there. When we were at $1.17, they were at $1.04, if you remember, their TRE failed. So when they started compressing tax rates, they started at a lower rate than we did. So they didn't have the ability to, to have their tax rate up there. And if you look at most of those others that we compared with, they're, they all passed TREs. So they, well.
Thank you.
Wanted to find out myself. Okay, insurance, at the last meeting, Ms. Fahy asked if we were going to supplement the insurance like we have every year, and we didn't have the rates at that time. We got them this week. It's the biggest jump we've seen since I've been here. The HD, the single-person rate went up $32 a month. We've had it as low as $10 a month going up. So our recommendation with this budget is to, to increase that from 301 to 333 a month supplement for any employee that chooses to take health insurance. That's a cost of about $440,000, which we'll just, we'll absorb that in the budget just like we always have. But when I got to looking at it, we've, over the last four years, and that's as far back as I went, we've added $72 a month to each employee that takes our health insurance. That's a $900 a year on top of, of what they'd be getting in most other places. And that's, you've allowed us to spend over a million dollars more on supplemental insurance over the past four years. And that 333 is $108 more than the state says we have to provide. So you've been very good about trying to take care of, because that's an extreme expense for employees. You've been good, but it's been expensive just, and hopefully, as Ms. Brown recruits, that's a, that's a piece that she's able to use because you've been faithful to do that over the years. Wanted to make sure you saw that since we did get the rates in. And anything we can do to control what they do, but we can control how we help our employees. Okay, next slide. This is the one you've been waiting on. On the left side, we're budgeting off of 10,876 average daily attendance. That's 55 students more than what we feel like we're going to end this year with. And we feel like that's doable. We actually are hoping it's going to be more than that, particularly with starting the three-year-old pre-K program. You can see the revenue there is about $4.4 million less than the revenue that we, we budgeted off of this year. We're supplementing that with some federal money to, to take that out. You'd ask about payment, one-time payment scenarios, those are on the right-hand side. If you chose 800, it would cost about 1.6 million, all the way up to 2,500 would cost about $5 million. And that's the only benefit that's really paid out of that is we have to pay Medicare, our portion of Medicare out of that, and so do the employees. Of course, they have to pay federal income tax also. But those are the scenarios. As Dr. Smith mentioned earlier, there's some things that we'd really like to have in place after we leave tonight, and one of those would be what your thoughts are on the one-time payment and what amount this would be, would make this part of the federal budget. We wouldn't, there's, there's no way to take it out of ours. If we do, it'd have to come out of fund balance. But we can do that. It's well within the guidelines of the, the grant. In fact, every district is asked the question, "Can we pay stipends out of this?" And the answer's always been yes, just justify them. Well, keeping your employees and keeping steady with it best you can with your employees is certainly one way to start reducing the learning loss. So those are the scenarios, sorry.
No, thank you, Dr. Bigby. I was just, had a thought here, want to make sure before you kind of give me feedback. So essentially, what we're going to be walking away from tonight is wanting to know what it is you want us to do in terms of the payment scenario, whether it's 2, 2,200, 2,500, or whatever that's going to be. And keeping in mind that we will fund all of this through our ESR funding, that 34-plus million that you saw a couple slides back. And what I mean by all of it, the teacher incentives that we just talked about, what we want to do for bus drivers, all of that will be, will fall under the ESR funds, so.
So we wouldn't have to take it out, any of it out of fund balance?
Absolutely.
Well, I'm, I can tell you right now, I'm for 2,500.
Me too.
Do I assume, I want to hear a little bit more, where you're taking these from, what pocket?
Yep.
Can we do a salary increase? I really heard Kathleen Brown, I forgot about the TRS portion.
So let me give you my thoughts on that. It's not that we cannot do a salary increase or what we would see as a standard raise. My recommendation at this point is that that's not something that we do, just because of some of the commitments that were, were required for us on a long-term scale beyond this grant period. And we need the flexibility over the next couple of years to see how things are going to stabilize across the state, reevaluate where we are. Maybe we could be in a position this time next year to give a raise. And so just a little uncomfortable with that recommendation. It's not that we cannot do it, but I would be uncomfortable with us going in that direction.
I hear you on the three-year period. That makes sense.
Another real plus of this, and when you think about giving everybody the same amount of money, those that need it the most get the most. When you look at the percentage of their salary, a 20,000, let's say the 2,500, let's just use that. And if somebody makes 25,000 a year, that's a 10% increase just by providing that 2,500 to those people. If we roll it into a salary increase, that's going to be prorated by typically, you can do it any way you want to, but normally that's prorated by teachers, and auxiliary gets this, even if you give a percentage, this isn't a percentage for those people. This is a, a much-needed increase for those people that really need it the most. Not saying the teachers, they need about 200,000 a year for this year, just for dealing what they did with this year. But when you're looking at struggling people and people that we're really trying to keep on, the bus drivers and those kind, this is a, this is a real incentive for those people.
I hear you. That makes sense as well.
Go ahead. Comment. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Well, it makes sense to me that we, when we make the decision to think about the big picture and what's sustainable, and that's what I hear that we have to keep in mind as a board, that we've been given a particular pot of money, and so this doesn't represent our hearts, you know, that we don't want to give a salary increase, but we're working with what we have, and this doesn't change. So with the salary increase, that's going to change with the budget, and then we're committing to something that we don't necessarily have in front of us. And so I see that we're able to sustain that because we have the money here for the stipend, and I'm with you, Coach, I'm sorry, Trustee McNeely, the 2,500, giving them the most that you guys have factored in, sounds like the best thing to do, and we can actually do it. It's not something we'll have to come back and take from their checks or anything like that. We've already checked. You guys have done the work to see that this is doable. We have the money to be able to do that, and that makes me feel good.
Good point, and thank you. Carla?
Yes, I'm with Dr. Phil and Dr. Ivory in the $2,500. I think with Kathleen, Mrs. Brown in mind, and, and how the public and other districts see our salary scale, I mean, we've got to really promote that we give these little nice packages because it's not going to look, when we start comparing salaries, but we've, we've just really got to make headlines with our nice little, what do we call it, benefit? We can't call it stipends, we can't call it bonuses, so is it?
Just our overall compensation plan.
Yeah, that sounds real nice. Yeah, I'm for that.
We can call it an incentive. It's a retention incentive.
We can do incentive.
We just can't call it a gift.
Oh.
Well, actually, the federal government didn't want you to use incentive, but in the grant, they've written incentive into the language. But we're going to call it a stipend.
Let's do whatever we can get away with and make it look good.
If you call it a horse, it doesn't matter if we can give them the money.
Madam President.
Yes.
Dr. Bigby, if the money is not here right now, this is money that we have to wait for the state to send us, right? So where does the money come from to fund, which I'm in agreement with, with giving the teachers the one-time payment, but where does that come from until we get the money reimbursed?
If you typically pay this, like you have in the past, it's been toward Thanksgiving. And by then, hopefully, we've gone through as part of the process to get reimbursed from the federal government. If not, we will actually be spending fund balance and then reimbursing it.
Thank you.
That's another nice thing of having a fund balance that you can do that with.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So I just need, I like your question, Trustee Phillips. So we foresee the money coming to us. We're okay to afford the 2,500, is that correct?
Yes. You could actually do this out of your fund balance, but since we have this other pot of money, we're better not doing that. It's not going to hurt if we, if we do have to spend it all out of fund balance and then reimburse it later. We're still in good shape.
And if we choose to do it in that season that we said, Thanksgiving, is that what we said? Is that one-time for you? I can't remember.
One-time. Yeah, what, what you've done in the past, and if, if this is the route you want to go, we'll bring you a resolution back on the 21st. But we really wanted to know tonight so that Ms. Brown could use that in part of recruiting tool. But we'll bring you one that says, "This is how they qualify for it, and this is how we'll pay it." It's, it's usually, I think it was like the 15th of November, if they were on staff September the 1st, and they were still on staff the day we paid, then they were eligible.
Got you.
Even if they were on leave, if they had to take leave of some kind, they still got that as long as they were still employed. But, but we'll bring you a resolution with those things on it, and you can approve it that way, or you can change it any way you'd like.
Thank you.
That's the way we've done it in the past.
And for bus drivers, I mean, we've got to really push all this. I mean, it, that's great.
It is.
Custodians, maintenance, warehouse, nutrition, all of it.
And it's just not, we're not just competing with school districts. Everybody's having to pay more to get employees now, so we're competing with McDonald's and everybody else.
Our police officers? Do, do we all get, I mean, do our police officers?
Everybody. All 1,900 people.
I mean, if we can scoop out of this pot, we might as well do that.
It's, it's the best way we can spend our money.
Yes.
If we don't have a motivated staff, it doesn't make a damn how many choices we got, it, nothing works. So you got to take care of the people. That's just the way I feel.
If we're going to close a learning gap, we're going to do it mostly with the people that we have.
Amen.
Especially if there's money set aside where.
Right.
We can use it for that purpose.
Take it out of fund balance. It's still, it's still there.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
How much do employees pay for insurance on a monthly basis, assuming, you know, a single scenario or, you know?
Yeah, they have the choice of four different plans. Most of them take the one that's called HD, which is a high deductible, and that one is, I've got the chart.
Okay.
An individual's part on that plan, if you choose to do the 333, is $96 a month, is what it costs to cover just themselves. Now, some of these plans are Cadillacs, and my goodness. Somebody want to hold this for me so I can read it? Some of them are up to $2,000 a month.
The older you get, the shorter.
For family.
Yeah.
You know what, getting those beats the alternatives, but yeah, the, if they're in the family plan or just employee and spouse, they vary quite a bit, but that, that plan, and a lot of people will take out, we have some supplemental insurance that they take that helps pay the deductible for that, so. But it's $96 a month for an employee. That's what we've always based, what we supplement.
And so on average, how much does a family, you know, would you pay if you were covering your family?
Yeah, let me take my glasses off. The HD plan, employee and family is $1,445 a month, and then we pay 333 toward that. So $1,100 a month to cover their entire family.
One thing that the TRS plan has always done, it, it reduces employee and children, but it kind of makes it hard on employee and family.
Yeah, the employee and children's a much better rate than you would think it would be, but when you put the whole family in there.
One point of clarification, too, I want to make sure the board is clear on this. When we talk about the $2,500. When we talk about the $2,500 one-time payment, it's for full-time employees, which is different from all employees. So that's a real critical distinction. So just wanted you to make...
Dr. Bigby, what percentage of our staff actually uses TRS?
1,143 of the 1,900 last year.
Majority, I mean, yeah.
Took the insurance. We don't know yet with the new people. We budget like they're all going to take it.
Thank you.
The employee and children is 772. So if you just add a spouse to that, you double the premium.
$772?
Yeah, before you pay the, before we take the 333 out. So it's not a bad rate, well, all of them are bad, but in today's market, it is not bad compared to a family rate.
So how many employees forego insurance?
Well, there's about 750 that don't take it. We don't know whether it's because they're covered by a spouse somewhere else, or why they don't take it. It's offered to everyone.
And then also, the part-time employees that we have, what positions are part-time?
There's only like six of them.
In which?
In the district.
Kathleen, you were talking.
She probably knows.
Yes, we have positions like our lifeguards that only work part-time. We have people who are part-time helpers for seasonal things like game workers and ticket takers, all of those individuals, so they're not here on a full-time basis with us.
Okay, so they're not here like half the week? They're just more seasonal?
They're part-time, seasonal employees, and so we consider them part-time so they don't get whatever you approve.
Okay, thank you.
And the way you've defined that in the past is if they're TRS-eligible, if they're eligible to participate in the retirement system, then they're, they were covered by the, whatever stipend you chose to give, which just about all of our employees.
Go ahead.
When is the, have we had a compensation study performed for the district employees?
Two years, one year?
Yes, we have. Go ahead, Kathleen.
When we did House Bill III, which was two years ago.
We did.
Oh, two years, okay.
We do it regularly.
So every two years, we have a compensation study, and so this year, we didn't have one. We did our own internal small study to get this information, but then we'll be back on track for next year.
Okay.
And we do that through TASV HR Services. It's two to three years is what's recommended. When we're in a place where we think we don't need one, we can do a little update to where it's not a comprehensive study. We do staffing and compensation studies with TASV HR Services. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Cassandra?
Thank you, Madam President. Dr. Bigby, are there any things in this money, attached to the money, that would allow us, or require us, to give it a little bit more thought? Because it sounds too easy. It sounds like it's just too good to be true. Like, the money is there, we can give 2,500 with no consequences. Is there anything we should be concerned with or focused on?
No. I've slept with this thing since it came out. There's just not. In fact, if we wanted to go back and just say, and Dr. Smith might talk briefly about this, if we wanted to pay 40 of the high school teachers with this money and keep our own, then that's well within the limits of the grant. So there's all kinds of options to do that, but they've, through every session I've been in, they've said, you can do this.
Okay, thank you.
So we're probably not the only ones that are going to. I know we're not, the tutors and those kind of things. So it's a unique situation for school districts.
I think it's a great opportunity for us to take care of our staff, like Trustee McNeeley stated earlier, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, board. I think we have the direction that we need to finalize the budget over the next several days. Obviously, you all have, can give me feedback ongoing, and so we have our charge. We're going to put the budget together and present it to you on the 21st.
Great job.
Thank you. And I want to tell the board, I appreciate you speaking up when you had a question. It made us more real, if you will, because we're not strictly tied to a budget, I mean, agenda where we can't talk. People want to hear how we feel, so I think that's good, and I appreciate y'all's support on that. Thank all of y'all in the audience for coming. Yes, Carla?
Madam President, may I take this time to thank all of our staff who helped us with graduation last night? Thank you for being there.
Yes, I was going to say, especially you who had to be here. I know you had to be here, but I can see it in your eyes, even if you have a mask on, you're tired. You are tired, and you need to take care of yourself. You really do. You need to take care of yourself. I know work comes importantly, but you need to take care of yourself, and I appreciate it because I know the information that Kathleen and Dr. Bigby reported to us came from y'all, so I know the hard work that it takes, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you for putting it in a way that's easy to understand, Dr. Bigby. I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Again, thank you all for coming, and being that there's no further items to discuss, this meeting is adjourned.